All of you Mario, it's all a game.
I'm so, I'm so reborn. I'm moving forward. Keep moving forward. Keep moving forward. Ain't no stress on me, Lord. I'm moving forward. Keep moving forward. Keep moving forward. I'm so, I'm so reborn. I'm moving forward. Keep moving forward. Keep moving forward. Ain't no stress on me, Lord. I'm moving forward. Keep moving forward. Keep moving forward. I had my issues. Ain't that much I could do. Peace is something that starts with me. With me. At times wonder my purpose. Easy then to feel worthless. But peace is something that starts with me. With me. Had so much in my mind. I didn't know where to go. Coming along with them haunting me. Had me feeling all solo. Ain't no stopping you nowhere. All things ain't like before. Ain't no stopping you nowhere. Hmm, no stresses, I'm so blessed and... I'm so, I'm so reborn. I'm moving forward. Keep moving forward. Keep moving forward. Ain't no stress on me, Lord. I'm moving forward. Keep moving forward. Keep moving forward. I'm so, I'm so reborn. I'm moving forward. Keep moving forward. Keep moving forward. Ain't no stress on me, Lord. I'm moving forward. Keep moving forward. Keep moving forward. Someone's wrong. Couldn't hold on wide. So long. Sit here in the store. Time goes on. But they couldn't find my way out. I'm a storm. Which way do I go? 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 Keep moving forward. 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 I'm so, I'm so reborn. I'm moving forward. Keep moving forward. Keep moving forward. Ain't no stress on me, Lord. I'm moving forward. Keep moving forward. Keep moving forward.
My independence is calling my name. A doubtful voice. About my faith. My independence only hesitates. An unsure choice. I can't embrace. You're gonna have to cut me. Cut me from stone. Right to the bone. Or I'll end up alone. Playing the role. Of someone in control. Why do I rush to slow down? Why do I rush to slow down everything? Why do I rush to slow down? Why do I rush to slow down everything? Will the dice ever roll? Will I ever know? Will the blood ever twist? Or will I still resist? I'm playing the part of a lost realist. My independence is turning the page. Tomorrow comes. We start to fade. My independence only complicates. It's not enough to meet halfway. You're gonna have to cut me. Cut me from stone. Right to the bone. Or I'll end up alone. Playing the role. Of someone in control. Why do I rush to slow down? Why do I rush to slow down everything? Why do I rush to slow down? Why do I rush to slow down everything? Will the dice ever roll? Will I ever know? Will the blood ever twist? Or will I still resist? I'm playing the part of a lost realist. I only keep what I give away. I only keep what I give away. Why do I rush to slow down? Why do I rush to slow down everything? Why do I rush to slow down? Why do I rush to slow down? Everything. Will the dice ever roll? Will I ever know? Will the blood ever twist? Or will I still resist? I'm playing the part of a lost realist. Why do I rush to slow down? Why do I rush to slow down everything? Why do I rush to slow down? So is it true? Are they better than you? Are you playing it cool? Lips sealed, holding back the truth. So hard to make it through. That past always catches up with you. So afraid of what you'll do. When no one's there to help you choose. And if you ever decide to speak the truth now. When they cast their first stones. They will cast them at you. They will cast them at you. Alone, in a crowded room. Forever fading out. If you lay down so they can dance. All over you. You only have everything to lose. At home in old costume. A light mask you're wearing. And you, you've found a new romance. You only have everything to lose. A certain charm. You do not possess. I know you can't confess. Who feels sick of your distress? Some things will never change. Deep under the ground you make your way. The choice has just been made. Sit back and fucking pray. And if you ever decide to speak the truth now. When they cast their first stones. They will cast them at you. They will cast them at you. Alone, in a crowded room. Forever fading out. If you lay down so they can dance. All over you. You only have everything to lose. At home in old costume. A light mask you're wearing. And you, you've found a new romance. You only have everything to lose. Everything to lose. When they cast their first stones. When they cast their first stones. They will cast them at you. They will cast them at you. They will cast them at you. Alone, in a crowded room. Forever fading out. If you lay down so they can dance. All over you. You only have everything to lose. At home in old costume. A light mask you're wearing. And you, you've found a new romance. You only have everything to lose. Everything to lose. I threw up away. Suckered in my good election. I was catching your shit. The ache was there. The life was gone. You were like me. Catch the race. Die to let you fly. I threw up away. Suckered in my good election. I was catching your shit. The ache was there. The life was gone. You were like me. Catch the race. Die to let you fly. Now that I understand. That you can't be. Now that I understand. That you can't be trusted. Now that I understand. That you can't be. Now that I understand. That you can't be trusted. Now that I understand. That you can't be. Now that I understand. That you can't be. One by one. What's at the front? This body dies. Right away. When I focus. The enemy's surprise. I can't believe you. Will give up your chance. Your day. Right away. And just you. Take your eyes into me. And I know this is for you. Fly in a dark sea. What's next? Then bring us the same spirit. What's next? Then bring us the fall. What's next? Then bring us the same spirit. What's next? Then bring us the fall. So persistent. That makes me sick. It's not the sight of you. And now I am so faint. Caught up in us this way. I know that you can't be more than this. This wasn't what I wanted. You set my soul on a dream. Climb for the wind's weight. Is it just that seeing? Making you itch? I'm almost become something from a dream. This isn't the way the blow I see. It's all yours now. You give up, it's making me sick. My ambition. Is where I'm thinking. I will believe in you now. Stay away forever. Fuck us, running after the moon. Cause they hide from God. It's bill. We'll take our chance. Like, like, like. Let's break down this fear. This is all just a cry. This is all just a lie. This is all we're left to hide. Face it or we're... This is all just a cry. This is all just a lie. We're all in the night. This is all just a lie. And now we're all afraid. To see why. We can't give it up. But now your shirt comes off. I need something more tonight. When you're worn.
My instinct was to flee from home. I will find you in due time. In sleep. You'll go where you want to go. In love. You'll see what you want to see. In sleep. You'll go where you want to go. In love. You'll see what you want to see. I wanna go. And I wanna see. Brind me into dust. To fill my skin crumbling. Feed me to the sea. To hear my lungs stumbling. Siren's song. Take me home. 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 Where the stones can cover me. When the time runs out. When your blood runs cold. Stay strong. Where lungs give in. And a world caves in. Be bold. Alone. Oh. Alone. Oh. Sand grass. And open skies. That's where I'll be. Sand grass. And open skies. That's where I'll be. Sand grass. And open skies. That's where we'll be. That's where we'll need.
Yeah, I know what this is.
That's what you niggas do, girl.
So, so dead.
I've been watching you for a minute. Come through here, some sweets in it. Your life, girl, you need me in it. I'm determined to win it. I know what you need, I know what's wrong. I know how to make it tight. Everything will be alright if you introduce it to my world. Introduce it to the better side of life that you ain't been seeing, girl. I'ma show you where it's at and I'ma show you how to get it. All you gotta do is be with it. Down like a real man supposed to. I never would have approached you if I ain't have intentions on doing good. See, dude, you with it so fool to me, girl. You're so cool and all I'm asking you to do is down like a best friend, the two homies in the gang. When you cry, I'm gonna feel your pain. No secrets, no games. All excitement, nothing plain. Keep you happy, that's my aim. And all you gotta do, girl, is
In my arms and my mind all the time. I wanna keep you right by my side till I die. I'm gonna hold you down, make sure everything is right with you. You can never go wrong if you let me hold you. Down like a real friend supposed to. I'm trying to show you the life that somebody like you should be living. Oh, baby, baby, if you never go wrong if you let me hold you.
I'ma keep you up on what's poppin' and shaking fresh to death. When we hit the mall, we gon' ball till there's no more left. I know you ain't used to it, but you gon' get used to it 'cause that's the only way I'ma do when you let me. All the homies think I'm tripping 'cause I got you a pad. But see, they just mad 'cause they ain't get you dang, get you Scorpio. It's your sign and, girl, you're so fine. And I would do whatever in no time, no shine. It's what you coming with, but I'ma change all that. Rearrange that, put you in the brains all black. With the rims, the match, all attached. TVs in the back, how you gon' say no to that, huh? Niggas look at me like, "Man, here you go." Really bout to blow some dope? Ain't nobody did the false wise. You so gung ho 'cause I believe this was meant to be. I just gotta work at it like a crack addict up in rehab.
In my arms and my mind all the time. I wanna keep you right by my side till I die. I'm gonna hold you down, make sure everything is right with you. You can never go wrong if you let me hold you. Down like a real friend supposed to. I'm trying to show you the life that somebody like you should be living. Oh, baby, baby, if you never go wrong if you let me hold you.
Down, down, around, Atlanta, Atlanta, I found. Everybody knew now what I'm trying to do. I say down, down, around, Atlanta, Atlanta, I found. I'm just trying to get you to
Let me hold you.
Down, down, around, Atlanta, Atlanta, I found. Everybody knew now what I'm trying to do. I say down, down, around, Atlanta, Atlanta, I found. I'm just trying to get you to
Let me hold you. In my arms and my mind all the time. I wanna keep you right by my side till I die. I'm gonna hold you down, make sure everything is right with you. You can never go wrong if you let me hold you. Down like a real friend supposed to. I'm trying to show you the life that somebody like you should be living. Oh, baby, baby, if you never go wrong if you let me hold you.
Get, 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 got, 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 got blood rushing in my head. They hot lock popping off the fucking block. Now clocking wristlet watch been top off. Tear up our drug and volume blasting, bailing out my brain. Red light flash, them stop I smash. Abraxas, I drop blank massive. That's his fight for reigning madness. Mastermind and lace that add where black hat fits on the razor stratus. Cut right to far that line. Don't wait for me if I care about anything, anywhere. Losing myself, I get the stairs and I'm looking at. Wasn't there. Wasn't there. Wasn't there. Wasn't there. Wasn't there. Nothing out there can stand aside. Hit the ball, stick the prob, he drove the call. I'm still alive, up in smoke, moon is low. Had you now, didn't say I did. Things is this, you know what this is? But did you know? Get, 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 got, 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 got blood rushing in my head. They hot lock popping off the fucking block. Now clocking wristlet watch been top off. Flying side out, rocking big shots, snitch on you better when he quicks out. So many ways to skin the friend, remember when? First I strays, now just think it. Life a base, a welcome next. Right away. Right away. Right away. Right away. Right away. Raise curve, guilty drunk, I'm black top cover the sky. Talk to people of your eyes, sickness move, feel the night lifting through you. Last to mob. Feel my semen crack. Yeah, knowing and you know why. Near to mental, evident top, the team homie get crucified. Can't close this here, waste the cost. Meet you here, but I'll end up y'all. Should be asking, "Where's the sex?" Full with a ski mask on my face. Get, 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 got, 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 got blood rushing in my head. They hot lock popping off the fucking block. Now clocking wristlet watch been top off. Locking tropic manic cycles, fire water burning. Vipers break a bridge and throw the taxi. Take me to the nearest city. Sell out of me, yeah, get at me, make it quicker, blood. I'm busy. 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 Blood all into my head, pissed the bone up, dust the breeze. Living my thoughts up, them tip, ever to pay, but come skeleton weight. Know nothing since then, but seen been flew into the nexus, sweating dreams. But did you know? Get, 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 got, 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 got blood rushing in my head. They hot lock popping off the fucking block. Now clocking wristlet watch been top off. Get, 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 got, 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 got blood rushing in my head. They hot lock popping off the fucking block. Now clocking wristlet watch been top off.
Yo, bro. I think I had too much Hennessy, man. This Hennessy getting to me. I ain't gonna lie, I'm a little smashed. I'm a little dressed. But we in the club, man. Yeah, they hate, but they broke though. And when it's time to pop, they are notion. Yeah, I'm pretty, but I'm loco. The loud got me moving slow mo. Ay, yo, Tweety, where the hoes, bro? Ay, yo, Keys, where the hoes, though? That other nigga, he a bozo. It's a mayor, you don't know? We got liquor by the boatload. Disrespect the life, that's a no-no. All my niggas dressed in that roll hoe. I ride for my guys, that's the broco. Baby gave me hair, that's a low blow. Them she make me weak when she deep though. I need a rich bitch, not a cheap hoe. Baby on that hate shit, I peep though. My brother told me fuck them, get that money, sis. You just keep on running on your hungry shit. Ignore that hate, ignore the fake, ignore the funny shit. 'Cause if a nigga violate, we got a honey cliff. And we go zero to a hundred quick. We just them niggas you ain't fucking with. Pockets on the chippy check. And still go back a thotty and some bummy shit. Yo, Eli, why they texting me? Like I don't always keep that hammer next to me. Like I ain't got a hitter to the left of me. Like we ain't in these streets more than sesame. If that shit chick, then why she texting me? Why she keep calling my phone, speaking sexually? Every time I'm out, why she stressing me? You call her Stephanie? I call her Hefany. I don't open doors for a hoe. I just want the neck, nothing more. Shorty, make it clap, make it applaud. When you tired of your man, give me a call. Dyke bitches soaking out they jaws. Next minute calling for the law. This nine I have them calling for the law. They ain't getting schmoney, so they bored. I could never lose, what you thought? And they got it all locked, man, of course. They say I got the juice, I got the sauce. These haters on my body, shake them off. Pussy, I'm a bully in the bush. I'm killing them, sorry for your loss. I just caught a body Randy Morse. Now this year, I'm really going on. Ooh. Ooh. These haters on my body, shake them off. Ooh. Ooh. These haters on my body, shake them off. Ooh. Ooh. These haters on my body, shake them off. I could never lose, what you thought? What they thought? I could never lose, what you thought? This Hennessy got me, it got me sauce. This Indian got me, ooh, it got me sauce. I could never lose, what you thought? And they got it all locked, man, of course. Ooh. Ooh.
Ten gold chains with grain propane. Cellar whole thing from the cell phone ring. Callin' your name, bitches sniffin' cocaine. All my young niggas know that they got old wang. Old wang. Old wang. Old wang.
If, if, if you send me trouble.
Bitch, they call me young drug dealer. They call me young thug nigga. Twenty-four cash, my slugs glitter. Twenty-four years old worth a couple miller. Shoutouts to my cuz niggas. Finna let it fly for my blood niggas. Middle finger up to you, fuck niggas. You a tripped nigga, then fuck with us. Nigga dash like the speed of a bullet. With a pistol on him, probably wouldn't even pull it. Hump me to put it, me mugging with a hoodie like it was Guti. Trying to be the motherfucker that you couldn't know when you down to let it fly when I should it. All my young niggas, they gon' rap it to the fullest. Tell a fuck nigga, be you. Fuck tough, be cool. All the young niggas in my crew, they down to let it
For a nigga like me. Young nigga like me. For a nigga like me. Young nigga like me. For a nigga like me. Young nigga like me. For a nigga like me. Jiggy, young nigga like me.
Ten gold chains with grain propane. Cellar whole thing from the cell phone ring. Ten gold chains with grain propane. Cellar whole thing from the cell phone ring.
Niggas got rips in they jeans, man, I started that. Hood by air, man, I started that. Niggas claim they the guard of black, where your name is purple. I'm the guard of that. Gave you my back, nigga, part in that. Fuck that shit, I bought Marvin back. Bought Robin back. Bought the garden back. Motherfuck, Black Lynn. I bought Harlem back. Rollin' in my Benz, oh. Rolling in my Benzo. Hoes on the curb, a couple of friends. Rolling down my windows. Yo, what's the word? I can get in. Ride round with these bimbo. She gave head to my kimp folk. Shoutouts, my connecto. Keep a watch out for them windslow. The boys gon' creep, the boys gon' serve. Hoes gon' skit and the V gon' swerve. I'ma get by while the world gon' turn. I'ma get mine like you gon' get cherved. Niggas do the least when the peace got nerve. Niggas in the streets when the heat got burned. Tell a nigga, "Be you, fucked up, be cool." Couple young niggas down with my crew. Who be down to let it fly?
For a nigga like me, young nigga like me. For a nigga like me, young nigga like me. For a nigga like me, young nigga like me. For a nigga like me, jiggy young nigga like me.
Ten gold chains with grain propane. Cellulose thing from the cell phone ring. Ten gold chains with grain propane. Cellulose thing from the cell phone ring. Ten gold chains with grain propane. Cellulose thing from the cell phone ring. Ten gold chains with grain propane. Cellulose thing from the cell phone ring.
She say you a goddamn liar. I ain't mean to say that shit, girl, I was goddamn high. So we left the crib, now we in a goddamn ride. She looking goddamn fine. I wanted a bitch who was down to earth, but she want the goddamn sky. List of my problems. Got that one on my line that won't stop fucking calling. It's crazy how I made her that way. Every time I see her out, I see the hate in her face. Why you do that? Tell her you love her when next week you just want your space. Why you do, why you do that? Tell her you want her, but next week you do your own thing. Why you do, why you do that? I can't explain it, but just know it working for me. She text me, "I hate you, I hate you, I hate you, I hate you." But how the fuck can you hate me? When I ain't did shit, but be the real thing. She know I'm not real, gotta never change. I never been the one to try to explain why you catch them feels. I'ma sip on this drink, it's easing my brain. I got real shit to stress about, girl, I ain't worried about shit. Remember that I tried to build you. Nah, I ain't worried about shit. I got real shit to stress about, girl, I ain't worried about shit. Remember that I tried to build you. Nah, I ain't worried about shit. So I found me a new thing. I'm not as lost as you think. Got plenty queens in my hometown. All they need is drinking that dank. So I found me a new thing. I'm not as lost as you think. Got plenty queens in my hometown. All they need is drinking that dank. It's a goddamn shame. We didn't crash, we done burned, but baby, you the goddamn blame. See, I wanted love, but you wanted goddamn fame. Every goddamn thing. I wanted a bitch who was on the move, but you on a goddamn lake. List of my problems. Got that one in my bed and she just wanna sleep. Fucking up all of the sheets. She only wake up to eat. Do this shit every week. Like, why you do that? Crying, you wanna be great, but sleeping until the next day. Why you do that? Don't got that much in the bank. We go out, she order the steak. Why you do that? She can't explain it, but just know it working for her. She claiming she don't know her love, but really, she don't give a fuck and I cannot make this shit up. I ain't did shit, but be the real thing. She know I'm not real, gotta never change. I won't be the one to try to explain why you catch them feels. I'ma sip on this drink, it's easing the pain. I got real shit to stress about, girl, I ain't worried about shit. Remember that I tried to build you. Nah, I ain't worried about shit. I got real shit to stress about, girl, I ain't worried about shit. Remember that I tried to build you. Nah, I ain't worried about shit. So I found me a new thing. I'm not as lost as you think. Got plenty queens in my hometown. All they need is drinking that dank. So I found me a new thing. I'm not as lost as you think. Got plenty queens in my hometown. All they need is drinking that dank.
I wanna be up with you and show you what I'm thinking. I'll take you anywhere you wanna go. I'm sitting here, but lonely. And you know that anytime you're free to show me how you feel. I'll take you anywhere you wanna go.